Our heads together. Our Father, we thank you for the privilege of living in a country and a community where we can come together to do business. And we ask that you guide our minds and our hearts and our spirits, help us to understand and have the knowledge to make wise decisions. Thank you for all who are present tonight, and we ask your blessings upon all of our lives. Amen.
Our flag is the flag of the United States of America and a sovereign republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton, here. Councilman Crocker.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Black.
Here.
Mayor Proton McVeigh.
Here.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Here.
Thank you, and welcome back.
Thank you.
Yes, forgot your name.
Disclosure of interest, any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on their printed agenda or any matter discussed at a previous meeting.
Mayor, I have a possible conflict of interest regarding action item BB.
Okay, and I'll have a possible conflict on item EE of Mayor Proton McVeigh will take care of that one.
Which one?
On EE.
EE, okay.
And the action required item.
And which one was these?
B.
BD.
BB. Thank you.
If nothing further, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Sir, give your name and address, please.
My name is Jeffrey X. Two. I live at 1108 Bradley Street. First, I want to say good evening to all and council members. I'm here about a street dance. I've been giving a street dance for about between thirty-five and forty years here in Papa Bluff, my community. And I've been, for some reason, they says I can't do it anymore. Or if I do it, I have to have an insurance policy that covers a million dollars that says it's a million dollar policy for what? I do not know. I don't know if I done anything wrong or not, but I'm hoping I didn't. I'm trying to do whatever is right. And I would like you all permission to try to help me see that if I can get my street dance again. It comes up on the third of July.
And you told you the million dollar policy?
I don't know. It just said I couldn't do it unless I had a million dollar policy.
They're having a little trouble hearing you, sir. See if that's on.
Yes.
Okay, maybe speak into it a little stronger.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
I'll check with the insurance company tomorrow.
That did come up one year, about a million dollar policy, some kind of way. I'm not sure. I'm not sure why they asked for it. That came up about, probably about five or six years ago.
Okay, I can check in the morning and see.
Okay.
You can call down to City Hall tomorrow morning and talk with Ms. Kirby or Mr. Massingham, and leave your number, and they can find out and get back with you.
All right, I sure appreciate that, and thank you all very much for listening to me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Angela White.
Hey, Angela.
Hi, good to see you down.
Turn the microphone.
Oh, I'm short, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Here we are, okay, hi. Good to see everybody tonight. I've got, I guess, a request.
What's your address?
My address is 314 East Neat Street in Papa Bluff. Okay. I noticed that, like, this evening, there is an awful lot of information on the ordinances and whatnot, that's on the workshop and voting and stuff tonight. And I understand that the city council members receive your information packet at least three or four days ahead of time, like, the Thursday or Friday before. And if I understand correctly, it's in a digital file. So I was wondering, since we want people to be involved with what's going on in the community and understand and have, you know, clear, like, just basically, I can't find the right word. Welcome to Menfoster.
Better language.
Better, you know, better understanding of the decisions that are being made and why and how, if those packages could be uploaded to the city website when they're uploaded to the city council packages. That way, we can save a couple of trees, and citizens who are being represented by the different wards and the council people at large will have information to see what is being brought up, and then they'll have information to contact their city council person. So, I mean, that way, I mean, that way, our city council people who are representing us, we will be able to know why or how and what, and have a good conversation with them about what's going on.
Okay, I guess we can check and see what some other cities are doing through.
Well, it doesn't really matter what other cities are doing. We have a website that has the agenda and the minutes, and it's a digital file.
Yeah.
I mean.
We can, you know, they're, you know, I don't see any real problem with it, but I don't know if there is, and some may have already, you know, found out a problem through court or something like that, and I'd like, you know, do our due diligence and check for.
Oh, well, sure.
Possible problems and alleviate them.
Right. Well, I mean, it just seems like a really good idea to have what our council people are looking at, and then that way, we can give our input to them so that they properly represent us. Does that make sense? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Steve Bush. I'm the regional manager with SMTS here in town, 2510 Canal Boulevard. And I'm here this evening, I just wanted to give you an update on how we've been doing with the Bluff Area Transit Service, otherwise known as BATS, our city bus service. And I'm gonna pass around some numbers for you, but I'm gonna read them, too.
Okay.
Now, I know it's kind of an odd thing to come and say, over the last five months as opposed to a quarter or six months or that thing, but I've got five months of numbers in front of me. And our pre, our first five months of this year compared to the first five months of last year, we're at one hundred and eighteen percent more ridership this year alone. So you see, we have one month there in March, we had one hundred and ninety-seven percent over March of last year. Comparing our stop increases, we've had anywhere from an average, it probably averages about eighty percent for most of the stops. We had one that is a surprising number for me, I'm not really sure why, Hillcrest Apartments is actually dropped in ridership, but you see that Sable Lot has jumped over four, four hundred, almost four hundred and eighty percent over last year of the same time period. Some of you may not know that a year ago, before a year ago, it's been about a year and a half now that we increased our rides or routes from one bus, one route, an hour and fifteen minutes round trip, we went to two buses and four routes. And so we added stops, where we had about twenty, twenty-one stops before, we're at about thirty-five stops now. So these are some of the new stops down here on the bottom of the sheet, and you can see that we're, what our ridership is from January through May for each of those stops. Most notably, I wanted to point out that Three Rivers College, where we didn't have any riders last year at this time, and we're up to one hundred and nine for this year. And this is without any advertising, without any real promotion at this point. But part of the reason I also wanted to bring up the numbers, too, is that we have city bus stop signs around town that are no longer applicable, and some of those stop signs are in bad shape. And I'm hoping that the city council will work with me here in the near future to remove old bus stop signs, and where applicable, put up new stop signs. We have two brand-new buses that we're using right now, we just got them, they're brand spanking new. Right now, they only have a BATS logo on the front cap and on the driver's door of each bus. And the reason for that is that my intention is to go out and find advertisers to do bus wraps and create some visibility on those buses. I've already got one vendor that's interested in doing one of my buses, and that same vendor is also interested in placing some bus stop shelters at some of our key locations around town. Most of my stops are on private property, and so we'll have to work directly with the property owners for placement. But there are some locations around town that we would like to work with the city to get the easement or to maybe even work with us to put a pad down so that we can have the bus stop shelters purchased and placed by these private citizens that want to purchase them. Their investment, the bus stop shelters that they would be looking at have an advertising panel. And so their return on investment would be the advertising revenue that they would make from that advertising. I did something similar when I was in Sedalia, where we, we had a gentleman there that wanted to purchase up to twenty-two bus stop shelters. And then, and again, he purchased the bus stop shelters in exchange for the advertising revenue, and the city just worked with us to find the placement and give us the easement to be able to put them down. And I'm gonna be asking the city to do the same thing with me. At this time, I'm just bringing up the idea, don't have any solid plans yet, but I need to know how to proceed in the future when we do come to this, not only with the design of the new bus stop signs, but how to proceed with finding and working with the city to make sure that we can find the right places for the bus stop shelters so they work in our locations. An example of this would be Hillcrest Apartments, where the ridership is dropped. We moved the stop there from right in front of their front doors to Second Street, or, not Second Street, what, maybe, yeah, there's Second Street, yeah. So the stop is actually on the street now, which makes it a little bit less convenient for the residents there, but if we had the bus stop shelter in place, they would have somewhere to wait for the bus that not only they could see us, but we could see them. But that requires some easement, I'm assuming, some easement with the city to be able to put the bus stop shelter right there near the curb. The ridership has increased, we're getting a lot of interest, and the four routes that we have now are working, they're, we're staying on time. The people love our new buses. And occasionally, when we have needs here in the community, such as recently when we had the flooding, we, we made the service for free for several days, and we offered our buses to be able to assist those people that needed to evacuate the area, to move out of that area. And we will continue to do likewise in the future. Do we have any questions from you?
I think it's great.
Comments about how I would proceed in the future?
I think, Steve, I think you and I just need to sit down and talk about what you wanna do, and if it's something that needs to come to council, we'll take it to council. It may be just something we could do administrative-wise, but.
Okay.
And I'll be more than happy to meet with you and see what we can do, so.
Okay. When you get to it.
Appreciate your report.
Thank you.
There's nothing further, moving on to item seven, consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the city council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second to accept the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. We're going to workshop item for discussion. Item A, the city council will discuss renewing the city manager's contract. Ms. Kirby, let's get you down.
It does have me down. Y'all have just a copy of Mark's contract from last year. I just enclosed that so you can look at it, and would ask that we would vote on it at the next council meeting. There's really no changes to it. Salary and everything's still the same. We can only do it by year, by law, so.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we move item A to the voting session.
When is the next council meeting?
July 3rd.
Is it the 3rd?
July 3rd.
Okay. Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Item B, the city council will discuss a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a request to rezone property from RS2 General Residential to O1 Office Professional for future commercial use. The applicant is John D. Barber and Barber Family, Post Office Box 91, Papa Bluff, for 1.75 acres, more or less, of vacant property lying east of 2700 Katy Lane and north of 2438 Katy Lane. Mr. Avery?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you stated, the applicant is John Barber, Kevin Barber, Jane Walters, and Roseanne Huck, represented tonight by John D. Barber as property owners. They did file a request with the Planning and Zoning Commission to rezone a parcel to O1 Office Professional. It's vacant land. Existing zoning is RS2 General Residential, single family. Once I reviewed the application and proposal, I made a recommendation to Mr. Barber that we eliminate a portion of the property from being processed for rezoning to O1 Office Professional, leaving the portion that is adjacent to Barron Road as residential RS2 single family with a conforming building lot remaining as the residential. They are, however, asking that the south portion adjacent to Barron Road, adjacent to Katy Lane, I'm sorry, be rezoned to O1 Office Professional. And the land does lie between Katy Lane and Barron Road, lying east of 2700 Katy Lane, which is the Assembly of God church, and north of 2438 Katy Lane, which is the credit union. There's approximately 2.5 acres in total. Surrounding land use to the north and west is single-family residential RS2. To the east is also a single-family RS2, and to the south is C2 general commercial, which would lie immediately across Katy Lane. This was zoned RS2 General Residential in 1972. Office Professional is what they're requesting, that is an intermediary zoning district to set between a heavy or commercial and a residential area, which was part of why that they were advised that this would be the more appropriate to request. It is vacant land, it does slope to the south, utilities are available to the site. Access is from Katy Lane, and as the parcel sits now, it can be accessed from Barron Road as well. Police and fire protection is available with fire station number two being the first responder. There was a fair amount of discussion, concerns from the neighborhood when this went through planning and zoning. I believe several of the same individuals are here tonight. I've spoken with some of them over the duration of this process. I made a recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission when this originally came up, and it was discussed. Stipulations were added to it to try to answer some of the concerns of the neighborhood. I don't believe we answered all of those. I did recommend approval to this request with the following stipulations: that only the southerly two acres, more or less, adjoining Katy Lane be rezoned to O1 Office Professional, and that the northerly portion would remain RS2, and that of that remaining portion that there would be a conforming buildable lot for a future single-family residential structure if wanted. And the second stipulation was that if rezoning to O1, the legal description of the southerly O1 parcel shall be deed restricted to include a permanent vegetative screen along the north property line, which would be between the O1 and RS2 zones if it were to be moved forward and approved. I did provide Mr. Black a map a fall ago that maybe enlightened him a little bit as to how it's specifically laid out. As I said, it's vacant land, it's immediately east of the Assembly of God parking lot, paved parking lot. I would take any questions that you might have.
If you, you said it'd be two, two and a half acres against Katy Lane, is that correct?
When I look at the county records, it shows it's 2.39 in total, but you sometimes have a difference between calculated acres and deeded acres. So without a valid survey, I couldn't exactly say that it's going to be two or 1.75. I think it's probably going, if, with the drawing that is shown, I think he's probably gonna end up with about one and three-quarter acres that he's asking to rezone. Mr. Barber? As it went through planning and zoning, we had one zoning member that did not recommend moving to the voting session, and then when we did vote it, we had one person vote not to move it forward to the council with a recommendation to approve. But the Planning and Zoning Commission as a whole did move it to the council with a recommendation to approve with the stipulations as stated.
So this is the drawing that you have right now, is that correct?
Sir.
This is what it should look like here in, if it was asked?
Yes, a rectangle to the south adjacent to Katy, and then an odd-shaped lot to the north adjacent to Barron.
It's not a lot to Barron Road, is it?
It's a little bit bigger than it looks. A buildable, conforming lot in the R2, RS2 zoning is 100 feet wide and 100 feet deep at building line, and that does satisfy that requirement. It is an odd-shaped lot, though. But it eliminates any contact of the O1 zoning with Barron Road as well.
What other properties are adjacent to that that might now come in and ask us to rezone them, too?
There are, there is no more vacant land in this immediate vicinity. There are two houses to the east that lie between Katy and Barron, two residential houses at this point. I can see that either those might at some time, or some other properties in the immediate vicinity may at some point in time come before the planning and zoning or the council for a rezoning request, but that would be a whole different matter and might receive a different response because those are valid, those are viable houses, and this is a vacant parcel. I believe the family's owned it for, I would say, in the range of fifty to sixty years.
Oh, more than that. Three generations, two generations or three generations?
Right, quite some time the family has owned this, so. But yes, it is possible. And I addressed that in the planning and zoning meetings as well. I mean, I wasn't going tonight, but I also didn't say that I would recommend it, or that the Planning and Zoning Commission would recommend it, based upon the existing conditions on those other properties. Did that answer your question?
Yes, that question, yes.
Okay.
That was a very good question.
I see that coming up.
It was brought up in planning and zoning about those two houses.
It was.
It's a possibility that they may come at another date, but that doesn't have anything to do with today's.
No, but it's a concern.
But it's in the future.
The, the.
It's in the area.
The most recent rezoning in that area would have been the flower shop property that Mr. Payne owned and requested to have rezoned, I'm gonna say, six years ago. And it was rezoned to O1 Office Professional, and it's farther east at the junction of Katy and Barron.
How many people did you have in opposition to this re- rezoning?
There were one, two, three.
I mean, you don't have to give exact numbers.
Four, four immediate neighbors and some others on Barron Road. So I'd say five or six.
Property owners, people who live there.
Most of them, most of them. Most of them live in the vicinity, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to hear from a couple of those folks that are here.
Okay, I was just waiting until I'd answered all your questions.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avery.
People call me Dan, cause it's John Daniel. And I talked with my Uncle Joe this weekend, I was in Kansas City. He moved out there with my grandfather in 1948. The family had kind of survived the depression, and this was kind of their dream property, dream home they built out there. Hand dug a basement out there. My grandpa dug about sixty bushels a year of potatoes out there in soccer field behind the church out there, and what's now the church. The time he bought, I think it was about seventeen acres of property that he actually bought, and it extended down to that Odegrado curve, you know, down in front of Priest Forest, then all the way out to, he actually sold the gas, the gas station property there on Katy Lane in Westwood when that was originally sold. And so, so it's going on seventy years that we've been providing free green space for that part of the community out there, and I think the brothers and sisters, I think my grandpa sold that property to the church for about $35,000. And it was, there were other people looking at it, and I'm glad he didn't sell it to the beer distributor who was talking to him. He was a good Baptist, so he would never have done that. And, you know, we wanna be, we wanna be good neighbors, we, we, all the people, most of the people who are opposing are people that I have been friends with. Mrs. Clark tried, tried very hard to teach me Spanish in high school.
Me, too, actually.
And she worked, she worked at that. I think, I think Mr., I'm not sure, but I think I understand from, I don't have a reference for sure on this, but I think Mr. Standard's grandfather and my grandfather, who used to be the sheriff of Butler County, Edgar Hamm, as opposed the spread of the KKK to Butler County, so, and Papa, Papa Bluff area. So we go back, the property goes back three generations. Our, our relationships with neighbors go back three generations, so this is, so this is not something that we're, we're not land developers, and people are just, I don't think we're carpetbaggers coming in here trying to do something. But we're looking for a soft transition between, you know, if you drive down Barron Road, that obviously that's an established residential neighborhood in Papa Bluff, it has been since my grandpa moved there in about 1948 and helped develop the neighborhood. And, you know, we've had priests, priest, my, when my dad was finishing medical school, my little, my big sister used to go over with Susie Priest, who is now Sue Payne. She was their little girl, and they would play together, and when they were little girls, when my dad was finishing medical school, and they were trying to take care of me up there in, in St. Louis where he was finishing up medical school. So we're looking for, it's a soft transition, and I think that's what this type of commercial, this, when I talk with Dennis, I talk, we considered doing this about four years ago, and the office commercial type of zoning is what we're looking at, because we want something, if you, if there's ever a situation in Papa Bluff where you need a soft transition between commercial and residential property, this is a piece of property that, that just fits that like a glove, because here you've got, if you drive down Barron Road, you see one thing, if you drive down Katy Lane, you got the, you've got the credit union over there, you've got American Superstore, I guess you can't get too much more commercial than that. And so really, you're kind of talking about two pieces of property, not, not really so much one piece of property. And one, and it's quite different, but you don't wanna have, you know, you also don't wanna have, you know, I know if you, if you, if you're skin diving and you come up too fast, you get the bends, so, and that's not a good thing. So I think that's, we wanna assure that people are gonna, that people are gonna be okay with that. And, you know, I think, I look around at the neighborhood I grew up in, and you look at the character of neighborhoods in Papa Bluff throughout the years, you know, most neighborhoods had a corner grocery store. There's always been some integration of commercial property within some kind of a reasonable distance from residential property. You know, I went, I could walk a block to the bowling alley. If I went the other way, I got to the cemetery. I'd rather go to the bowling alley, where I grew up on Main Street. If I go a little further, there was Blakeney Dairy, they had a, you could get a 15 cent cherry Pepsi there. When I walked home from Mark Twain's school, there was Lance's Market on the corner, and Dorothy Lance never could figure out how I could misspell the same word four different ways on the same sheet of paper, you know? So you have this mentoring in your neighborhood, you connect with people, so I think there's this, I, I guess I have a different philosophy of what a neighborhood is and what a community is, and how things, how things fit together, but I think it's, I think accommodation and compromise are things that we end up having. But I think it's, I think accommodation and compromise are things that we end up having, we end up having to do. There's only, the city did a great thing when they rerouted Barron Road and Katy Lane, because you pretty much cut off Barron Road from most of the traffic that goes out there. I think if we were redesigning north into Papa Bluff, we would probably make a different kind of road there. I guess that used to be Highway 67 North with Barron Road. Literally, it was Highway 67 North, so it was, and it was in, when my grandfather bought it, it was in the country. It was still in the country. So as that happens over time, and history kind of falls into place, you know, things, I think we have to make some accommodations, and we have to be reasonable. And I think our proposal is reasonable.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Mr. Standard?
I'm John Standard, 1310 Barron Road. Mr. Mayor, Madam Protem, council members. That's a tough act to follow. Dr. Barber's a professional psychologist, so I'm afraid that I'm really up against it. He's also one of my very dear friends, and he's absolutely right. Our families go back, I remember, four generations and maybe more. I can remember four generations. I'm here to speak in opposition to this zoning proposal, good-naturedly as I can. There's not a finer family than the Barbers, I want to reiterate that. But five or six years ago, as Mr. Avery mentioned, the New Leaf Flower Shop, which is on the other side of Barron Road and just slightly east, was rezoned to this same zoning category. And supposedly, they wanted to put up a sign, other than the one they had on the building. That's the reason for the rezoning. So they got it rezoned, and then very soon thereafter, sold the business. That had been a family business for more than a half century, operating under a conditional use permit, I'm sure. It was a family business long before Papa Bluff had zoning. And so they got it rezoned, and then it sold. And so those people didn't have to worry about getting a conditional use permit or going through that process. And that was an unfortunate thing, that that ozone, I call it, that the ozone was given to New Leaf. That was spot zoning. There's no question about that. If you get into zoning theory and you read something about zoning, that was commercial zoning right square dab in the middle of nice residential, RS2. Zoning is supposed to be done for best land use and not for personalities or anything like that. And I will grant immediately that, in this case, it'll be worth more money if it's zoned commercial or office. It'll sell for more money eventually. But Papa Bluff has a great shortage of good building lots for residential. And here's a lot in excess of two acres. Granted, it does have a church parking lot on, along the west side, but you could easily plant a screen there, and that's a wonderful lot for somebody, for a residential lot. It's on Barron Road. The other thing I'd like to point out is, if this is zoned, even with the split where it's residential on the Barron Road side, those two pieces of property farther east are both RS2 now, and the ownership there is the same for both properties. The same gentleman owns both of those. And so the westernmost of those two properties that go down to the point where Katy and Barron run together will be joining, it's RS2, and it'll be joining the old part of what we're talking about tonight. So again, you're gonna have old professional bumping right against RS2 residential. The other thing is, and I've seen it too many times over the years, that once this gets into the ozone, I'll use that again, there's gonna be a great temptation for the present owner of those next two properties, or somebody in the future, to request ozone for that. And then those people on Barron Road, on the north side of Barron Road, are gonna be looking across at the potential of a strip mall or whatever. I want to make one other point, and that is, if you go west on Barron Road from this tract under discussion tonight, once you get past the church property, there are only three pieces of residential property on the, let's call it the south side of Barron Road, assuming it runs east and west. And that would be the Farmer Wolpers property where Blanch Wolpers lived, and next door to that would be where John Wolpers lived, and Mrs. Emmon lives there now, and then where Harold Porterfield lived, those three. And then everything from Mr. Porterfield's old house in the curve of Barron Road, everything from there on out to New Wave is commercial, and that happened several years ago. However, on the other side of Barron Road, that whole stretch along there is all very nice RS2 homes. And I think a gentleman here at the table just bought one of those homes, one of the nicest places in Papa Bluff. And so I just want to make those points, and I want to make them respectfully to Mr. Barber, certainly, and I just would like for you all to consider what I'm saying. The opposite end of Barron Road, I live a mile away, I don't live in, close to this, but I'm just speaking for the integrity of the overall neighborhood. I live in the 1300 block of Barron Road, and down at the corner of Main and Barron, some of you don't know, but that whole intersection is zoned C1 commercial, where the daycare center is, and then each of those four corners. And that C1 zone then continues on east all the way to West Avondale, on the south side of Barron Road, the extension of Barron Road east of Main Street. And that happened years ago. And so the potential is there, and there's a nice subdivision down there, and I would wager that many of those people in that subdivision probably don't know that. But it's, you can look on your map, it's C1 commercial from the corner of Main and Barron East all the way down past where Barron Road has been extended, all the way actually to West Avondale. So I appreciate the time, it's wonderful to be able to exercise my cherished First Amendment rights and speak to you all, and I appreciate every one of the council. Having been, spent some time as an elected official, I understand what you go through, and for the big money, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hi, I'm Emily Wolpers, 1300 Barron Road, and I just wanted to say a couple of words that I agree completely with what Mr. Standard said. I don't have any issues with the Barbers at all, but I just feel like, in my lifetime, Barron Road has just piece by piece by piece is turning into a commercial road instead of a residential area. And I would just like for you all to rethink this, this process that keeps happening, where we just pick different places around, and instead of for the good of the community or the good of the neighborhood, we're just going on personal requests. And a good example, and most of you are not on the council, but I think it was Northwood Boulevard about four years ago, and a dentist bought a house, but it'd be the first house near the commercial district. And those people built that neighborhood, they all lived there for 40 years. It was their neighborhood, their subdivision, and he wanted to rezone, and it would be, that was the first house, I think, near the commercial. And they hired a lawyer to come down here and fight it because they knew, one by one by one, because all you have to say is, well, the house next door is commercial, so we're just gonna move down. And that did not pass, but it took, I think, five meetings, counting P and Z and city council. It got tabled that many times. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, let's see, council members and Mayor DeGerris and President, Mayor Protem. Gotcha. First of all, thank each and every one of you for your service on city council. It's a big job, and I don't envy it.
We do need your name and address, please.
Oh, hello. Laura Clark, 2505 Barron Road. I can't keep up with John's being there in 1948, but we have lived there since, for 48 years, since 1969. And we, it was country then, we were box 69A, we had our own septic tank and well. So, and we had Dr. Barber's horse visit occasionally. So we've lived there a long time. It was a fixer-upper, and we've added a family room and a two-car garage and an art studio, and we're just about to get it right. We're working on a bay window for the kitchen now. And so we like the neighborhood, we like the neighborhood feeling, and it's, well, we're like, I think all of those that have spoken, we're kind of Papa Bluff lifers. We went to grade school and high school and taught here in the public schools and lived here, and I love driving over the brick streets, because I think all of my family now deceased, and all of my husband's family now deceased, they drove over those, and it's sort of like, all the things in town I see, oh, we did that, or, so it's kind of like a communion. And I also kind of think of Barron Road like that. It's just kind of a, you know, looking at the map, you see North Main come around, hello, North Main come around and then go into Barron Road, and it circles, just like the bus we used to ride, where it would go to Loma Linda and come back again. And it's a unique, long thing, and for the most part, it's leafy on one side. Now, on the other side, if you're near a power pole, you're not gonna win Miss Tree America. But on one side, opposite power lines, it's leafy and arcs over, and it's, it's just a really pretty shady, shaded neighborhoods. Many moons ago, my college roommate from St. Louis came down, and she was coming around that little hill by my neighbor's house and, and a little pretty little curve from the Wolpers and the Porterfields and all that, and she said, well, this must be like a little do for here. And, and I think that may be true. We're trying to protect it. Like our Rogers Theater isn't the Fox, but it's our Fox, and this is the prettiest street we have in its length and most historic. And I was thinking, like, I know they've mentioned how all this gets started. Well, like, the State Home was where the church is now, and they had a beautiful diagonal-shaped cross window thing, like in this country, we have the horizontal things, that's like in England with the leaded glass. And that house is gone, it's a church now. That was the first one. That was the first thrust into anything in that feeder street. And then the Moore Home is where the credit union is now. And so we've said, that's one, and then that's two, and these two would be three and four. And then the property that's owned by one person that's been sitting empty, neither rented nor for sale signs in front, would be five and six. And if you're gonna have that one little lot left, a pie-shaped funny lot on the other side of it, I don't think a betting person on their investment would want to put a home there. Now, if it went all the way back to the shade where the tree line is, it would be all protected, that's one thing. But it's a pie-shaped thing that butts up against the parking lot, and I, I just don't think, when you think of Domino's, and I do think, as you're saying, the city councils have to come up with what they've got, but the very first one gives everybody else a padding. Oh, well, they did it, they did it, they did it, and we didn't. Well, you know, that first house was Pearlie Sue, and she was pure as snow, but she drifted. And we need to look out for Pearlie Sue and keep her from being soiled further. We have a beautiful neighborhood. If you have it pocked mark, someone from out of town thinks, there's poor city planning here to higgly-piggly jodge, you know, zoning thing, you can't protect your property values that way. Okay. One more thing. We think you have to represent the whole city in all of its best interest, but, and that's a hard job. It really is, because I only served on boards like art museum board and the library thing, and that was mostly enriching people's lives. I didn't have any, like, power to change people's neighborhoods or, or nothing along that responsibility. But since we've lived there 48 years, we've had all kinds of people coming to our door asking for votes, and we always listen and usually vote, and our lawn's probably got little holes in it from all the yard signs we've got, probably could irrigate it well. So, and for all these years, people running for the council have come up and come into our neighborhood, up to our front door as people, and ask for our votes for the city council. And mostly, all the people in the neighborhoods all over town are the ones who elect you, because it's not just office, I mean, not just business people. And if the city council doesn't look out for us, property owners, we have, we don't live in a, a community that's, you can't, due to, some communities are protected. The police says they're here to protect and serve. We really don't have anyone else to protect our neighborhoods but you. And progress isn't progress if it replaces something that can't be replaced. And cities, well, you go into cities and you see all these box stores, you say, oh, we've got one of those, we've got that chain store, we've got that chain store. You know, if you, if you change the locale and put a cactus or a tarragon pine tree or a palm tree or oak tree, that's the only way you're gonna know you're in a different place, because all the things look alike. And so some things that we have that are different and unique and valuable, it's progress to keep them, not to change them. And we have things in our city that are gone that can never be replaced. I know mine was the last high school to graduate from the high school that used to be the first little college thing. That was 57, 1957. And I don't pass that vacant lot now. Anytime I pass it, I do not think that I miss that lovely building, you know, that stage, it was curved, there's none like it. And we can't replace, we can't vote against things that can't be replaced. And thank you for listening, and thank you for serving.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Thank you all.
Yes, Mr. Standard?
Chalk it up to my white hair, I'm sorry, I forgot something. I want to make it clear that the old designation at New Leaf is directly across the street from the two properties that are down on the point where Katy and Barron run together. Those two properties, the house right on the corner, is not being occupied, it's being used as an office and storage space by the owner. He also owns that house next door that would join this property we're talking about, and it, too, is empty. So that's why I think, it's not being used as a residence. So that's why I think the probability is high that at some point, that will be requested to be rezoned probably to old, again. I wanted to make that clear, and I forgot to say it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep Pearlie Sue clean.
If none others, the only thing I'd like to say, Mr. Avery alluded to the one person on planning and zoning that voted against that, and that was me. I appreciate, you know, all the comments from all the neighbors and their thoughts, and you can see, you know, they're talking from their heart, just as Mr. Barber, his property, and I know he and Mr. Avery both worked together for that division, an extra vegetation deal to try to keep it. And my only reason was, and I explained it to some people after the meeting, nobody asked me, was to stop the encroachment into our residential neighborhood. I think that's very important, that's a beautiful neighborhood up there, we always take care of it, and we just, in my opinion, we just need to watch that in some places. But I was the one that did that, in case anybody wondered, so just straightened that out. But this is just a workshop, and to entertain a motion to move this to the voting session to be held July 3rd.
So moved.
Motion second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries. We're going to item C. The city council review a proposed ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the city of Papa Bluff and Midwest Environment. the City of Popper Bluff and Midwestern Environmental Studies for professional asbestos identification services relative to the flood buyout project. Mr. Avery.
I believe Ms. Kirby has that information, don't you?
Not, I can explain it. This is a number of houses that were acquired in the Second Grand, Cole, Neat Street areas. I believe there were 10 of them in this parcel, and we have to have asbestos inspections and possible removal done. This is part of the buyout program and buyout policy that we entered into. I call it the Hillcrest Park Area Flood Buyout. It's a community development block grant program. And we are seeking bids for asbestos inspections at this point.
Yes, Ozark Foothills had bid this out. I think it's $240 per project, I mean, per house that we have to pay for this. But that flood buyout project is an ongoing project already, and so, we're just trying to fast-track this tonight as a workshop and voting to keep this project ongoing.
We've used that company quite a bit on flood buyout for asbestos inspection.
Make motion, pass to voting session.
Second.
Motion second, pass. Item C, the voting session to be held tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the city council reviews the submission of a grant application for the reconstruction of the runway at the Popper Bluff Airport.
I think Dominic from Smith and Company's here to talk about this.
Evening, everybody. Back in 2015, the state hired a company to review the general aviation's airports and their pavement conditions. At that time, the city's pavement was inspected, their pavement condition index, the way they measured the asphalt portion of the runway, it scored low enough to be considered for this grant. The actual project for this grant is the removal of the asphalt portion of the runway, which is 4,000 feet, 100-foot wide. It's a $4.2 million project. It would be replaced with concrete, 6 inches reinforced concrete. It's needed. We've done slurry seal, joint sealers, the past 12 years, I think, around $400,000 to $500,000 every time. So, I mean, that adds up over time as well.
What's the life expectancy of a concrete runway?
About 50 years.
How long has it been since we constructed this one?
The...
The one with asphalt?
The asphalt runway. It's been there, Mike would know better than I, but 50 years, over 50 years. I mean, it started out as a military base, so it's been there a long, long time.
I'm just curious, from the life expectancy then?
Yeah.
Now, I explained in my manager's report that the city's, it's a 90-10 grant, so the city's portion would be around $420,000. I guess I'm hoping what happens is, it probably wouldn't be finished by the end of next year, so hopefully, we'd be able to budget partial next year and then partial in capital improvement the following year.
The way typically these projects work is, they'll do the design work first, which the design work will be done this year, going into next year potentially. Then they would bid it out during construction season, June, July. Typically, a project of this size will be, it'll take a little while, so. I just need the council's approval to submit this application. This is not a guarantee that the city would get the grant. This is just to submit the application, so.
After serving on the airport board and listening to the discussion there, I think this is a very needed and worthwhile project. We're very fortunate that the state deems us a possibility for it. I mean, they don't give these grants out very easily. I mean, we have no guarantee, but I feel like we need to at least apply for it because as the two years goes by, that runway continues to deteriorate, and then you wouldn't have a new starting point. So, I just feel like we need to at least apply for it and hopefully get it. And I too, I don't think you're going to see a lot of the funds going out until '18 and '19 because it's such a big project.
Motion, pass to voting session.
Second.
Motion second, pass. Item D, the voting session tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the city council will discuss vacancies on downtown Popper Bluff, the Disability Advisory Board, and Fair Housing Board.
Massingham?
Yes, we had an individual placed on three of these boards, and after he saw the schedule of the boards, decided he wouldn't be able to attend those meetings because of his work schedule. We had some people that had applied for the boards previously, and we're recommending those three people for those three boards.
I would make a motion that we move item E to the voting session to be held tonight.
Second.
Motion second for item E. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the city council will discuss a proposal ordinance, amending ordinance number 7244, authorizing the mayor of the City of Popper Bluff to enter into an amended lease agreement between the City of Popper Bluff and Municipal Airport Development Corporation, leasing hangar facilities and ground located at the Popper Bluff Municipal Airport to the Municipal Airport Development Corporation for purposes of constructing additional hangars. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here on behalf of the Municipal Airport Development. Some of you council members are new since we've last appeared, so I'll kind of give you a 30-second rundown. The Airport Advisory Board, as you know, is a city, a city board, works under the auspices of the council and the mayor. In corollary to that is what we call Municipal Airport Development, which is a private corporation set up back in early 1960s. The sole purpose, a not-for-profit corporation run by a self-re sustaining board, the sole purpose of which is to finance and implement capital improvements on the airport grounds. Okay? There's been several projects through the years that have been done under the auspices of the Municipal Airport Development, the oldest of which is the, are the old sea hangars, nested tea hangars that are out at the airport. More recently, when I came back to town in early 1992, we undertook a project to build new, what we call the D hangars. There's 20 of those. And most recently, in 2011, we undertook to build two large box hangars for jet-type aircraft. The way we work typically is, and what is in effect right now, is we take the footprint of where those hangars are. We lease that footprint of land from the city directly for a dollar a year. We then plan, develop, and build the hangars through private financing, local vendors here, local finances here in the city. We then are legal, have the legal right to take the revenue from the lease of those hangars. We use the revenue to pay off the loan. Once the loan's paid off, the property reverts to the city. That's the way it typically works. The 1992 project that we undertook was paid off almost in full in 2011, and since it had been so successful, we came to the board and said, we'd like to build two large hangars. Would you re-lease us that, that ground plus enough additional ground to build the two box hangars? We went, procured financing, we had them built, they've been fully leased ever since. So, the MAD works in conjunction with the city and with the Airport Advisory Board in order to accomplish things that the city legally can't do, since obviously, you can't get financing, and a lot of times, the funds aren't available. Okay? So, with that as a backdrop, the most recent lease agreement with the city was 2011. That's when we built the two box hangars. Since then, we've been paying down on what started out as a $650,000 loan, never missed a payment, we're in good standing with all the banks and so forth. There's been discussion more recently of a need for additional hangars, and we've developed a plan, even though we're still paying on the original loan, we've developed a plan to go ahead, if we can, and build two additional hangars adjacent to the ones that we built in 2011. And under that plan, we would not, we would not need to lease new ground from the city, but we would need to renew, extend the term of that lease because the original term in 2011 was 25 years, the amortization of that loan. If we refinance all this, it'll be another 25 years, but we've already lost seven years or used up seven years of that. So, our proposal would be to ask the city council to re-extend or renew that lease and add another seven years to the term of it so that we could procure the private financing necessary to build those two new hangars. Okay? Now, I have one more point to make, unless, are there any questions at this point? Okay. Part of the conditions, or part of the requirement that we have in order to procure the financing, we've learned after discussing with the local banks, has to do with a certain amount of revenue that we're going to have to generate between the old hangars and the new hangars and these ones that we're going to build in order to make the financing work, so to speak. And in order to do that, in order to do that, we were hopeful of being able to lease out these two proposed new hangars at a certain rate. Since we've started this project and planned it, we've been attempting to locate vendors at the lease rate that the bank was requesting. And Mike Smith, our current leasing agent for MAD, and Lance Donzie, our new airport manager who had been working diligently, at this point, we've been unable to get the required rental rate of $1,000 a month for that new hangar. If we're not able to do that and we can't get additional income somewhere, this project is not going to be able to fly with the banks, just because of the financing numbers. What we've been brainstorming about more recently, since I made my submission to the council last week, is the MAD is proposing that in addition to the existing hangars that we have under contract with the city, we would like to see if the city would allow us to also lease what's commonly known as the Leibler Hangar. That's the hangar that was built by the Leibler family back in the 80s. They held it for 20 years. At the end of 20 years, it reverted to the city by contract, and it's been a property of the city ever since. Lance is using that right now, leasing it directly to aircraft and taking about $600 a month revenue from that. If we could get the council's approval to add that Leibler Hangar to our existing lease, we could use that $600 a month to leverage enough financing to house two more jet aircraft in the new proposed hangars. The significance of that is that the jet aircraft that we are hoping to put in there and that we will put in there consume a considerable amount of fuel. Fuel cells are the bread and butter of the airport's contribution to the city budget. And these large craft, the more we have, the more fuel cells we have, the more profit we generate, the more money comes into the city. So, our belief is that if we can take control of the Leibler Hangar, use that 600 to leverage a $1.1 million loan, put in two new aircraft, you're going to more than make up your money during the course of the year in additional jet fuel sales, way, far beyond what that, the benefit of that $600 a month is. So, as an amendment to what you have in your packet, the letter that I wrote to Mayor Massingham last year, I mean, I'm sorry, last week, we would also request, as part of that ordinance, that in addition to the land currently leased, we would add the footprint of the Leibler Hangar that exists at the airport. Okay? I've asked Lance, Donzie, and Mike Smith to be here too. Lance took over as airport manager on January 1st, and I think he can kind of give you an idea of what we've done with fuel cells for the economic benefit of the city. Do you have a minute, Lance?
I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure, please.
I noticed in the old ordinance, it says not to exceed $1 million. So, you're now going for a million one.
The total loan, since we haven't paid the other one down, we've had about $200,000, it would be a little over 1.1 million. So, that modification would be...
We'd have to change that. And then, if we should decide to allow your request, that revenue is going to be coming out of Lance's budget and out of his revenue stream, right?
That's correct.
So, he would be short the $600 a month because we would be giving it over to the board.
He would be short on the lease...
But you'll make it up in fuel.
Hopefully, he'll be in the plus side on the fuel sales revenue.
I understand. I know his sales have been up tremendously since he's been there.
And those of you, I know some of you have been to our Airport Advisory Board members' meetings, and I was on the board for a long time and termed out, but we appreciate all the support of the city council, every project that we've brought to you. You all have supported, you've given us leeway and authority to do some great things at the airport. We're very proud of that. We're very pleased that the council works with us on that. But if there's any questions at any time about what's going on out there, we certainly invite you to come out, see the operations out there, visit with Lance, take a look at what's going on. I think you'll be pleased. So, Lance, you want to talk real briefly about this, just to reinforce why we think this is going to be a good deal economically for the city?
Well, this is my first time addressing the council, so please take it easy on me.
Name and address.
It's been, I have more than just fuel, so if you bear with me just for a minute. It's been truly an honor to be the city's airport manager, something that personally, I'm very proud of and I take it very seriously. I have big shoes to fill with Mike. He's done a fantastic job in the past, and he's owed a round of applause, in my opinion, so. The amount of fuel that we're selling right now, it's almost hard for me to believe what we're going through. And really, I haven't really done a lot much. I've kind of implemented some things with social media, you know, that's free. There's a few aviation websites that specialize in marketing fuel. One of them's called AirNav. For $200 a year, you get a premium listing, and I've absolutely had planes falling out of the sky to stop and refuel here. So, I mean, that's the kind of thing that we need and that's the kind of things that we want. I, I'm extremely proud, and this is almost too good to be true, but we have 21 new student pilots. That's incredible. What this does by having new blood is that sets the stage for future expansion, future growth of our airport. It's, it's really unbelievable. One girl, I won't name her name because I haven't asked for permission to do so, but she started out from knowing nothing about flying an airplane to having her license in seven weeks. And all that was done right here in Popper Bluff. So, I mean, when you see things like that happen, it gets you. In the last month, four, four new aircraft have been brought in and housed at our airport. The combined value of these airplanes, these four airplanes, is over $10 million. So, they buy a lot of fuel. We were talking about the runway conditions. This is why that we need to take that seriously because our runway has been patched and repatched and patched again, and we are to that point where this is, it needs to be concrete. That step has to be put in place before we would ever get an extension.
I have a question for you about that. Just passed me during it. Is it going to, is it going to, for lack of a better term, deter people from flying into Popper Bluff because we are ripping up the runway and replenishing it?
Well, I, I'll, this is a good question. I'll be honest, I'm not excited about that. I mean, it's going to be several months of downtime. And hopefully, we had the same thing when we had the runway lighting project. We had to shut, you know, both the taxiway and the runway down. And luckily, we got these aircraft back. Now, that wasn't nowhere near as long of a project as what we're talking about here. But another way to look at it is, if we don't do this, well, then, our runway will deteriorate to a point where it's unsafe to land.
Okay.
So, it's, we either do this now while we have a great chance of getting that money or we don't have an airport.
It's like building a new highway. And then, if you don't have a quality airport for the future airplanes to be landing at, we'll get passed by anyway, so.
And I've said this a million times, when these planes pull up... And I've said this a million times, when these planes pull up, I mean, this is the first impression they get of Papa Bluff.
I've said the same. I agree.
So, take a moment. The employees that I have, they take great pride in their work. Honestly, I couldn't ask for a better couple of guys. The amount of responsibility that they have on their shoulders is immense. Tugging around these airplanes, as I said, of, you know, multimillion dollar value, just inches away from walls and obstacles and other airplanes, I mean, it's, and they've never made a mistake. So that's something to be said. This is only the beginning, and I hope and I pray for the continued growth of our airport. And I honestly, I look forward to working with each and every one of you in the future. And if there's any questions, anything you want to know from me, I'm always here.
I have one question. You talked about downtime on the airport.
Excuse me?
You talked about downtime at the airport. Will the airport be totally closed? I mean, no inc, I mean, or outgoing aircraft?
Well, that's a good question. We have a parallel taxiway that runs a full length of the runway, the full 5,000 foot. I've already begun the paperwork with the FAA to get a special use permit that will allow our local traffic to take off and land on the taxiway. The chances of getting this, I don't know. It's the FAA, so maybe 20% chance, but, I mean, it's a chance, so I'm going to try.
Now, you're saying our local aircraft, does that include the jet powered aircraft also?
No, sir. They will, they'll have to go to another airport.
Okay.
And one thing that we'll have to keep in mind is if they go to Dexter or if they go, well, Dexter would probably be the most feasible, we would probably need to arrange some sort of ad hoc transportation to and from there.
This won't affect air evac at all, will it?
It won't affect air evac because they're helicopters. They'll still be able to take off and land. What it will affect is Eagle Madden, which they fly the King Air out of there. That plane, you know, we were talking about today, it flies organs and patients and, you know, all over the country daily. So it will affect them. What they did, when we did the runway lining project, they relocated to Cape Girardeau and leased a hangar for a month or two there. And then as soon as we reopen, luckily, we are back. And they have invested interest into the airport because they built a hangar specifically for that plane, and I believe it's a 20 or 25 year note where it would come and become city property in the future. So until then, they would be abandoning, you know, probably a $200,000, $300,000 hangar.
That reminded me of other discussion at the airport board. There was quite a bit of interest on individuals that wanted to build their own, finance their own hangars. How does that work in with what the Mad is proposing?
Well, I mean, it's essentially the same thing. About a year ago, I wrote a letter to the council. Not all of you were on it. I'm trying to remember. I don't think you were. I think you were. Asking for that because at that time, I think that's kind of when the Mad Board wasn't in a financial position to ascertain these notes.
Well, they've had another year to pay down since you proposed that. So that's the difference.
And we were looking at adding more nested T-hangers for the smaller aircraft. I think that's why we wrote that and we had asked for that. When the bids came through, it was still out of our price range, so.
Is that something that would work, correlate with the Mad proposal if we would have individuals to do like the Leibler's did, to build a hangar on their own and their own financing along with the city or the Mad Board building those?
I'm not aware of there's, of any ordinance that would prevent that. I think that, do you know, Pam?
But I think we have plenty of interest. From what I'm understanding, there's several individuals that are still interested. Or would they be the ones that would be running the new hangars that we're talking about? Are they same or different?
Different.
Different, okay. So they could, both projects could go on, possibly?
There's been talk where, you know, people, you know, would be willing to do that. We've explored that in the past as the Mad Board, but usually when it gets down to it, you know, it's just, it's more cost effective for them to lease the hangars from us or they just.
I think Mad's got something that might help us with that.
Mr. Donzie?
Mr. Donzie?
I know we've got other business.
Would you give us some information on the fuel cells?
Oh, sure. On the fuel cells, sorry, man. These are rough numbers. I mean, I don't want you to hold me, Jim. I know you're an accountant, so. We're averaging a $1,000 gross a day as average. You know, good days, bad days, and that's pretty good. And what, from what I've noticed is every week I do an analysis of all the airports in our area, and they're changing their price to keep up with us. So we're leading for once.
Okay, so if two of these new large aircrafts that use the fuel, that would more than make up that $600 on that one hangar?
It could in one fill-up, yes.
Okay.
Good deal. Thank you.
I appreciate everybody's time, and I know it kind of went on a little bit longer than maybe we should have, but we're very proud of the airport. I wanted to give Lance a chance to kind of introduce himself to council members. To answer your question, Susan, the concept of leasing, of allowing private owners to lease land, build their own and own it, was taken up last year, kind of in the frustration we weren't able to come up with the money to build those. We had a discussion on the Mad Board, in the Airport Advisory Council, and in fact, before this council, and we implicitly approved that concept. So we're going to provide spaces for two additional large aircraft, okay, in addition to everything that's there. If there are individuals that want to bring their aircraft and build their own hangar, that would certainly be encouraged. We would do everything that we could to make that happen for them. We would have certain parameters in terms of the location, the size, the quality control, that sort of thing. We're going to develop some standards and hopefully we'll generate some interest. We've had some, like Lance said, we've had some people have inquired. That would be a great area to pursue down the road because with the loan that we're going to be taking on here, I doubt that the Mad's going to be in a position to finance any more hangars. So we're going to be looking for alternative ways to get more aircraft here. I'll say again what Lance said, and it's our favorite thing. The airport is the gateway to Papa Bluff for the people that come to Papa Bluff with money to invest. They don't drive down from Papa Bluff and see our really nice sign on the North Highway because they fly their Citation down from St. Louis, all right, and the first thing they see is our airport. So our objective is not just to, you know, have a bunch of people that come out and fly as a hobby, although we love to do that, but our objective is to present the airport as a window to the city that is going to give the people confidence that they're coming to and investing in and putting their money into a well-run, well-organized city, all right? So that's really what this is all about. And again, we appreciate the time that you have if you ever have any desire to come out and take a look at it. Lance may even arrange for a little free trip up in the air for you. And by the way, I don't think you literally meant the planes were falling out of the sky to get gas.
Other than that first day.
I think it's a very controlled fall.
Other than that first day. Almost hit the tree.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
The last thing I want to say is, in your next voting session is July 3rd.
Yes.
I've got a pre-planned family trip out of town, and I think some of the others may be gone as well. So if you have any questions before then, we're going to ask that an ordinance be put forward to the city, but if there's any questions or discussion that comes up before then, please let me know because I probably won't be here and I don't want you to take that in a negative way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nothing else, I'd entertain a motion second to move this to the voting session to be held July 3rd.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. On to action required items, Bill number 7999. The city council will take action on an ordinance rezoning property from RS3 Central Area Residential to RA2 Residential Apartment and approving a conditional use permit to operate a faith-based not-for-profit women's housing program located at 704 and 708 Kinder.
Make a motion for first reading of Bill number 7999 by caption only.
Motion second for the first reading.
An ordinance rezoning property located at 704 and 708 Kinder Street from RS3 Central Area Residential to RA2 Residential Apartment and further granting a conditional use permit to operate a faith-based, not-for-profit women's housing program.
Move for second reading of Bill number 7999 by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance rezoning property located at 704 and 708 Kinder Street from RS3 Central Area Residential to RA2 Residential Apartment and further granting a conditional use permit to operate a faith-based, not-for-profit women's housing program.
Move for adoption of Bill number 7999.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Any questions or comments? Roll call Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Mayor Protim McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Bill number 8,000, the city council will take action on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to sell liquor by the drink and to approve a conditional use permit for beverage blending and/or bottling to at a proposed restaurant located at 506 Vine Street and located within a C3 Central Area Commercial Zone District.
Motion for first reading of Bill number 8,000 by caption only.
Second. Motion second for the first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow the sale of liquor by the drink and for blending and bottling of alcohol at a proposed restaurant located at 506 Vine Street.
Move for second reading of Bill number 8000 by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading of Bill number 8,000. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow the sale of liquor by the drink and for blending and bottling of alcohol at a proposed restaurant located at 506 Vine Street.
Move for adoption of Bill number 8,000.
Second.
Motion second been made for adoption. Any questions or comments? Roll call Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Mayor Protim McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have six yes votes and one abstention.
Thank you.
Bill number 8001, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the issuance of tax increment refunding revenue bonds, 8-point redevelopment project area two, series 2017, and authorizing and approving certain documents and actions in connection therewith.
Move for first reading of Bill number 8001 by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the issuance of tax increment refunding revenue bonds, 8-point redevelopment project area two, series 2017, and authorizing and approving certain documents and actions in connection therewith.
Motion for second reading of Bill number 8,001.
Second.
Motion second for the second reading of the bill. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the issuance of tax increment refunding revenue bonds, 8-point redevelopment project area two, series 2017, and authorizing and approving certain documents and actions in connection therewith.
Have a motion to adopt?
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. Any questions or comments? Roll call Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Mayor Protim McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 8001 is adopted. Bill number 8002, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a territorial agreement between Municipal Utilities and Ozark Border Electric.
Motion for first reading, caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the first reading of Bill 8002. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to execute an agreement extending a territorial agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and Ozark Border Electric Cooperative and to apply to the Missouri Public Service Commission for approval of the extension.
Move for second reading of Bill number 8002 by caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to execute an agreement extending a territorial agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and Ozark Border Electric Cooperative and to apply to the city, to the Missouri Public Service Commission for the approval of the extension.
Motion for adoption of 8003.
Two.
Two, yeah.
Second.
Motion second for the adoption. Any questions or comments? Roll call Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Protim McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGerris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Mayor Protim McVeigh.
Item EE, Bill number 8003, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 702 and the Water Sewer Department.
Move for first reading of Bill number 8003 by caption only.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 702 for its employees in Papa Bluff Water and Sewer Departments.
Move for second reading of Bill number 8003 by caption only.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 702 for its employees in the Papa Bluff Water and Sewer Departments.
Move for adoption of Bill number 8003.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, I'm sorry. I've lost my place again. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Kirby.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Protim McVeigh.
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
I'm out of practice.
One abstention.
She's standing up anyway.
Is that a, is that a best participation?
You're fired.
Let me go home.
If we didn't want to discuss, we'd have.
Oh, goodness.
I have no doubt about it.
That chair makes you say funny things.
Item FF, Bill number 8004, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Papa Bluff and Midwest Environmental Studies for professional asbestos identification services relative to the flood buyout project.
Motion for first reading of 8004, caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
a contract for professional services between the City of Papa Bluff and Midwest Environmental Studies for professional asbestos identification services for the flood buyout project.
Move for second reading of Bill number 8004 by caption only.
Second. Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to execute a contract for professional services between the City of Papa Bluff and Midwest Environmental Studies for professional asbestos identification services for the flood buyout project.
Move for adoption of Bill number 8004.
Second. Motion second to adopt. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGares.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 8004 has passed. Resolution number 1860, the city council will take action on resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a grant application relative to the reconstruction of the runway at the Papa Bluff Airport.
Move for first reading of resolution number 81860 by caption only.
Second. Motion second for the reading of resolution 1860, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, Mr. Richardson?
A resolution of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, stating its intent to apply for a grant from the Missouri Department of Transportation Aviation Section relative to runway reconstruction at the Papa Bluff Municipal Airport.
Move for adoption of resolution number 1860.
Second.
Motion second to adopt. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGares.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Resolution 1860 passes. Resolution number 1861, the city council will take action on resolution making appointments to the Downtown Papa Bluff Board, the Disabilities Advisory Board, and the Fair Housing Board.
Move for reading of resolution number 1861 by caption only.
Second. Motion second for the reading of resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, Mr. Richardson?
A resolution of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, making appointments to fill vacancies on the Downtown Papa Bluff Inc. Board, the Disabilities Advisory Board, and the Fair Housing Advisory Board of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Move for adoption of resolution number 1861.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for the adoption. Any questions, comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGares.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Resolution 1861 passes. The city council and the City of Papa Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempt under the open meeting law, section 610.02, 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, 1.9, 1.11, 1.12, 1.13, and 1.14, revised statute of Missouri.
Motion to move in a closed session.
Second.
But after the city manager's.
After the city manager's report.
All right. Three, yes. Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Uh, Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McVeigh.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGares.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Mr. Massingin?
Yes, uh, I've tried to keep you updated on our sales tax through the year. Our report that came in last week, which shows the first six months of this year, if you compare it to the first six months of last year, our sales tax is down 4%. I actually budgeted a 4% increase. Uh, if it continues on this trend, that's a shortage of $400,000 in revenues for this year's general fund budget. Uh, it's something I'm gonna have to keep an eye on and look at. You know, each department's gonna have to only spend money that they have to, but I'll keep an eye on this, and if we have to make budget adjustments fairly soon, I'll bring